Did you get a letter from? Place down in Texas. Yeah. Do you find any mud yet? Combine?
No.
I don't know.
Wish we could. Found a lot of wind last night.
It's miserable, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Found it. If the wind's going right behind you, that doesn't combine does not clean work darn. You know. Yeah, row by row. Count how many rows she's done.
Layers or rounds you've done.
I think we're good.
We're gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start with Pledge of Legions.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mochler, Packard, Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approve agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Approvement or yeah, improvement.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. Rod's just got the fuel cones.
And it looked like Volan.
Yeah, there's some indecision there, was there?
Well, I couldn't remember. I looked at it the other day.
One was crossed out and then the other was put in. I want to just say move to approve the little bit.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. See, Lane.
There's a one up for the diesel quote.
Was there more than just?
Yeah, there were two.
Yeah.
Okay.
And move to approve on diesel. This was. It's Southeast Farmer Co.
Yeah. I'll second it.
No, no, south. Am I looking at the wrong one? So Diesel, number two, correct? Is that the one we're talking right now?
Yeah, I think that's the switch.
Yeah.
And it might have been because of attitude.
So Volan is.
Volan achieves one of them.
Yeah, I have to confess that I don't really understand who the low bidder was there. And so I, I, I don't know, Phyllis, if you'd be willing to change your motion to Dick's motion, which was to approve the low bidder.
Yeah.
Certainly, I just had took the one with the, mine, the one X was erased, it looks like.
Yes.
Change my motion to the lower bidder.
You're right.
Yeah, I looked at that too. I thought it was a two instead of a seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll second your motion, Phyllis.
I have a motion and a second to accept the low bid. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Now we're on the. I'm here for three things, so first we'll do the quarterly report. I believe Kerry sent it out a while ago, but. It's the fourth quarter, so 2022 is done.
If I move to approve it.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yeah.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
Good job, it's always.
Yeah, it's widget counting is all it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Next up was the LEPC bylaws, which is the organization that handles all the hazmat county. In doing some research, the last set of bylaws was 1992. So kind of figured it was time to rewrite them, so I did, and it passed the LEPC board. It was two weeks ago. But I put in there that commission needs to approve it as well, just to be a little different. So. The board has approved them, just need your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. And with that, it was in there that come January, I'll ask for your approval of the LEPC board members. So that way you're aware of who is on the board and all of that. And if you happen to know anybody in the media or journalism business who wants to be on, we could really use one of those. The person that was doing that, they eliminated his position. So we no longer have that representative, but. Anyway, come January. And then also you'll, just while I'm thinking of it, you'll need to approve the drone board members. And then we will have to have the commission. Put a commission member on four of them, especially since Phyllis and Mike will need to be replaced on a couple of them, so. All right, next up is the drone pilot thing. Was Caitlin on? Caitlin is not on. Um, Caitlin and I have been working on trying to figure out the drone pilot situation. I sent you all the emails from Karen at HR and the insurance company and what their thoughts are. Caitlin is in the middle of writing up the MOU or contract agreement, trying to hit all of the things that HR and insurance has said. She was hoping she would have it done today, but apparently she has not gotten to it. Or completed it yet, so we'll get that to you as soon as we can. And then go from there. I still like the idea personally of a stipend if we can do it, just because it's easier to control hours and pay and all of that, but. I guess if you have any questions on it, I'll try to answer them now, but without that MOU in front of us again, we can't really move forward too far.
Any questions? I got to see the new drone fly last week and it was a successful flight. It came back under control to where it took off from. We saw how it was put together and a lot of its capabilities, so it was a good time well spent for me.
I assumed it was successful since Lane wasn't here begging for forgiveness.
Well, there's different levels of forgiveness in drone, drone crashes, so I shouldn't see, use the word that, that C word.
Yes.
Early landings are not great.
They're early landings or slightly rougher than other ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, with that, there is a new law that's been passed. As of July 1, but there's an expectation privacy law. So if you need to use the drone for other things, make sure we. Other than emergencies for the time being, just make sure we go through state's attorney's office to see if they agree with it. Because I don't think this law will last all that long, but they had to do something. We'll see.
Did you want these or just these?
Um. I'll take those.
If you want to, that's fine.
Drew, are you gonna come down?
He's on, isn't he?
He was on.
Yeah.
He's not anymore. He must be on his way down.
Let's go to vouchers and payroll. Everybody get to see those.
I'll move to approve them. Yeah, we had that Ferguson Water Works on again. What did we figure?
That was, it was an actual lead sign, like LED. Not LED. So it was an actual like lead warning sign.
Okay. That's what the $7,000 was?
Um, no, there was another thing on there too. We only have like, you know, this much space for description and so.
Sure.
Yeah, Rod looked at it and he, he said it was legit, so.
Okay, Drew. We're ready for you. Yeah, so there are three pieces of pipe, not two.
Okay. So I have a motion, second and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. So we'll start with Drew. Which one, you want to start with the flat on Greenfield?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, with Platte. Approximately 2973 Greenfield Road, track one lumber addition in 39551 Glenwood. Plating it off for a refinance or something like that.
You all right with the approval?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve them.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
Are you moving him off for building sites? Is that what they plan? I don't know any more details in that.
Get there. Okay, we got Platte approval. 46552 313th Street.
Yeah, Whitland addition in the South half and southeast quarter of 209351. The owner's Whitlands American Trust, but they're a. Subsidiary of Ducks Unlimited. This is part of their. They've been doing a lot of stuff in this area, apparently, so. And I recommend approval.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, is that, if I'm reading this, looking at this right, that's in that corner, right?
Yep, yep.
So if that's where the very center ditch runs right alongside of it, correct? Am I wrong?
I'm assuming there's a ditch there. The periphery is that part of the drainage. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is that gonna cause a problem when they clean it?
Yes, it is.
And they got it. We got it set up to clean it this year.
If I throw my computer against the wall, it's purely personal.
But if you're not in the right spot there, I was just.
Yeah, that's, I have no, I have no idea about the drainage ditches or.
Don't let them throw yours, Phil.
Hey, let's just table it. I'll call and ask.
Yeah.
The other one was the one they needed.
Because we approved to get cleaned at, it's getting great where I supposed to come and clean the rest of it. I certainly don't want to stop that.
Yeah, no, um, this isn't the one that they're, the other one we were rushing, they were rushing on because they need it for a closing.
Cool, sure.
But that track, this one, the wetland, I can call and find out and make sure we're not stepping on each other there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not wrong.
It looks like it's currently cropped, isn't it, according, by the looks of the photograph you provided.
Yeah, um, I thought it was.
That's it.
Yeah.
But it's in section 20. Yes, and that's right on that corner, shows those trees right there.
Right.
There's a ditch up right here.
Right, that's right.
So I could be off of it too a little bit. And I could see there.
It might not affect it.
Possibly two issues if you were to deepen the ditch, it could affect the wetlands. And there'd be the other issue would be the disposal of.
Yes.
The spoils onto, onto wetlands.
Sure.
Mostly is there a third issue that I'm not thinking of or?
Well, I don't want them to stop drainage. Yeah, the northern part of the state, there'll be, there'll be a drainage ditch and then they'll buy this property. Right. And then there's no cleaning there, so they've effectively stopped drainage from the north. And that I don't.
I know what you're talking about, yeah.
That cannot happen.
Okay, because people that pay into that very center ditch, that'd be pretty ticked off.
Yeah, so I need to, we need to make sure where this is actually.
And you know, it could be, like my first point, I guess, would go to that, is that if we were cleaning the ditch out, are we. There'd be two ways to looking at it, where cleaning, that would be a problem, like you're talking about, is if it were deepened. If you deepen the ditch and took spoils and. Plant debris that's broken down as well as the, as the recent plant debris out. If you're deepening the ditch, that's one issue. For just cleaning out. Trees and. Broken down plant debris.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, that's, that's a different issue that shouldn't be a problem to them.
No, but it has.
It can be, right?
Yeah.
This is sort of like the issue on the outlet to. Lake Thompson that we dealt with about two years ago, whether it's being deepened or not.
Sure.
Because the way it looks, it crosses very seriously.
Yeah.
Comes down that corner and then it goes. Goes across it, so that would definitely stop the idea of using it, as far as I can see.
Yeah.
So we have a motion table?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table it.
I second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion is tabled. Hearing on ordinance 2022-12 regarding an amendment to the 2013 revised zoning ordinance for Clay County. The commission will here consider and act on an amendment to chapter 4.05.05 districts and boundaries. C1 commercial district conditional uses specifically adding off sale alcoholic beverage establishments to the commercial district conditional uses.
Yeah, this is part of the Toby's project. And it'll get our language in our zoning, in our matchup with the language in our liquor license.
Yeah, now on the paperwork that's. Back in here somewhere. Again, here in our agenda, it says off sale. And back in the actual resolution, it says on off sale.
Yeah, because we already have. I think it's.
We already have on sale.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
And we're just adding off.
Yeah.
Just making sure that it, all the Ts are crossed, because this is a kind of an issue where that could be a problem later. So need a motion to approve. This particular amendment.
Well, this is just the first reading, right? So we would just need to set a second reading.
Oh, I'm moving to go to the second reading, excuse me.
No, I'll second it.
Okay. Some motion and a second to set the second hearing, second reading for.
Next week.
Next week.
Next Tuesday.
Okay.
All those in favor, so, or roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Request to rezone land located at 45304 302nd Street, Lakonda, South Dakota, from A1 Ag District to C1 Commercial District. For an agribusiness. Medical marijuana cultivation facility, the legal description is the south 560 feet of the west 355 feet of the southwest quarter of section 29. Township 95 North Range 53 West of the 5th PM, Clay County.
Uh, yeah, this is the next part in the marijuana operation up there by Lakonda, just off this place up there, so. Record after this, we'll do the license, so.
So this is pretty much the last step that he's gonna see us then?
No, one, one more.
One more.
One more at least.
Move to approve the result.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Not to complicate things, don't we have to do rezones by ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, this would just be the first year.
First reading.
Yeah.
And then we'll do the second reading next week.
Thank you.
When Philip said that too, I'm like, oh, we'll get it right the next.
Please amend my, my motion to include going to second reading. For an extra Tuesday. And we'll see you all again, at least once. Who brings donuts?
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
Executive session. We're not doing that. Do you have anything for me?
Good.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, thanks, Drew.
See you again.
See you next week.
I like tractor tires.
Well, we're gonna take a recess until, unless. There's a bid opening, yes, but not till 9:30.
Yeah. We have a lot to talk about with that, if you want, I could talk for 10 minutes and then.
Can you?
9:30 if you don't want to take a recess.
Well, let's hear about it.
Yeah.
Maybe even 11 minutes.
By the way, how are you, Mr.?
He has a voice.
I have a voice. I get pizza on Friday. I'm happy.
Rod was kind of glad not seeing you here for a couple of days. I thought he'd be here for sure today because he, but then he thought, ah, she's back.
Well, so we have some developments on, on the car bids. We have a car that we ordered, believe the actual order went in January of this year. And we're still waiting for it. We were told recently that it wouldn't even enter production until the December and we probably see it sometime next year, so we thought, let's get this car ordered for the 2023 cars. So while Donnie Stewart was working on his bid for that, they canceled our 2022 for just outright canceled the order. And he was, he was pretty upset with them. He worked on that quite a bit last week and came and met with me yesterday at his wit's end. He intended to be here this morning at 9:30 to answer any questions you might have, but he's got a sick kid. He couldn't come. I told him what I was gonna tell you and he was perfectly comfortable with that. In fact, it was all but a recommendation from him. In that we would look at the, the state bid contracts. And looking at that, Lamb Motors was the state contract holder for the Ford interceptors. They are not taking any orders. Ford isn't building any cars, any patrol cars at this point. And so I can't order a Ford through the state contract. The Tahoe, no, no dealer, no GM dealer in the state bid for the Tahoe. They just received no bids, which leaves us with the Dodge Durango's. And so this is what Donnie had recommended, do we look at the Dodge Durango's and that. He isn't trying to chase us away. He wants to continue to do business with us. He just can't sell us the cars. The Ford won't take the order. He said he could, in an effort to try to honor our 22 contract, he said, I don't even know what we can do about it. He's got a bid bond submitted. He's got a contract with us to deliver a car at whatever the price was, I want to say about $35,000. I wish I had it in front of me, but. Something like that, and he said he simply cannot, no, it's $37,000. He simply cannot deliver the car. Ford told him that they can change that to a 2023 model, but the price will be $44,000. So we're looking at an increase of $7,000 and he said, I can't even promise you I can get you that car. He said, so they would accept the order as a change, but they would likely cancel it before it ever, ever is produced, so. He, he, he could, he brought me all of his email exchanges with him, so I could see that this isn't just him saying this and how frustrated he is with, with Ford and, and the. They call it the Dealer Council. And so he, he works with the Dealer Council to get these orders placed and he just simply can't order the car. I don't know what we. If, you know, if the county should have repercussions against him for not being able to deliver, but it's simply not his fault. And, and he can't get the car and can't get the, and we can't order the 2023s for next year. So I reached out to, to Wagner Auto and Pier. They have the state contract for the Dodge Durango. I looked at their, at the specifications for that. They do meet our, our advertised specs. One, one difference is that we had an 800 coal cranking amp battery. It comes with 750. I can live with that. It's not a big deal for me. Other than that, with the add-ons that we would require to meet our specs, we could get that car, you know, for $41,078. That would be, and this is a 2023. So I talked to them and I told them that I essentially have cash in hand if they've got a 2022 Dodge Durango. And we could buy that this year and they actually do. And, but it's, it's another agency's vehicle that had ordered, but he thinks they might cancel their request for that and he will have it on hand and we're next in line for it. And he's waiting for that agency to meet with their commission. He wouldn't tell me who they were. And so, uh. So there's an opportunity to get the 2022 still as a Dodge Durango, what he recommended if we wanted to go that route. And at this point, it's the only bid that we have and that's using the state bids that we can, we can buy off of, that meets the specs is the Dodge Durango through Wagner Auto. He recommended we order three and then if we can get the, the 2022 that he's got in stock, then we just change the order to two.
So what's the 22 cost?
He said, well, you can probably get you a good price. He didn't give me a price on it, so.
It should still be the same, the bid price, though, right?
Probably 2022 bid, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I don't have that information, so.
Which will still be a pretty good price.
I would think. These Dodges are a little bit cheaper than the Fords. They always have been. We've always gone with Ford because we try to buy local. And Ford does a good job for us on, on our trade-ins and try to make it as equitable as we can, but I'm not uncomfortable with the Dodge in terms of. The vehicle itself meets our specs and our needs. We get warranty work done in Yankton. We get regular service done here with the garages we use, so. I'm definitely comfortable with that, but it's not 9:30 yet, so.
So you have a decision to.
If you get the 2022 and then you're gonna have two new ones for 2023.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because we kind of went with that idea, you get like one and a half.
Yep, yeah, we budget for one and a half.
Right, right.
Then we don't spend it on one, on the other. Yeah, this 2022 is a one car year, 2023 is a two car year, starting to look like a three car year. And none this year, but if, if. And none this year, but if if uh, if this works out uh, with that, with that other one in hand would really be helpful to us because we are really tight. In fact, uh, if we don't get it. Um, and I'll recommend it that we order the three. And if we don't get it, I might come back and revisit that with you. See if we can just get something else. We've got a detective uh, on staff now. Right now, he's driving a vehicle that's assigned to the deputy that's deployed. Uh, he'll be back in December and then we don't have a car. We're short a car, so we'll do doing a lot of uh, you know, using cars multiple shifts, which we find how many miles that puts on, so we could possibly get him into something else altogether. I really don't want to. I want to have him in a patrol vehicle that's, you know, equipped for that in case he ends up taking a shift. But um, we could conceivably put him in some sort of other general vehicle that we could buy. But I'd rather go this route if it works for us, but if we can't get that twenty twenty-two out of Dodge Durango, then um, maybe we'll talk at another meeting.
Was Donnie going to take the old one in and trade it?
Yeah, and so we'll, we'll have to surplus it.
Yeah.
There'll actually be two surplus. None, none this year. We were just keeping a car this year. The twenty-two, twenty twenty-two was adding because we added that position. In twenty twenty-three, we're going to uh, get, trade out two cars, so. This will be a non-issue. These, these Dodge Durango's, if we order the twenty twenty-three's, he he estimates delivery will be August. If they don't cancel the order, so he's, he's only just slightly more optimistic than Donnie is. In that, these orders will even be honored. In fact, he said, make your order right away because they're going to probably close this soon, just like Ford did.
So we got nine thirty.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yeah, you're right.
This is nuts.
Yeah.
I know.
Well, and we had, how much did we have uh, for our twenty twenty-three uh, uh, budget? It was, it was still thirty-seven. Thirty-seven, well, we budgeted forty-five because that includes installation of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And um, I I think, you know, I haven't touched that line this year, just to kind of keep it clean. You know, I've gotten, we we bought some equipment for the the car already, but I haven't spent it out of there yet just because I wanted to keep that clean. Because I thought we might be carrying it into next year and I.
Right.
I thought, let's just leave it alone there. And um, in fact, I'm actually waiting for some bills for some of the equipment that we bought to have it installed in the vehicle when it comes. Now we're going to have to revisit that because that stuff was bought for Ford explorers. And so we have to see if we can change that.
So. So the money we've set aside in the budget that we've budgeted for, you know, we're doing the year and a half card. Did we set up that extra account? That that money goes into the equipment fund? Because if we budget it one year and we don't spend it all, then it goes back into general fund and then.
Right, and we can always supplement the next year or, um, like we said, we can assign it like we do for the ambulance.
Have we started doing that yet or are we going?
Not yet.
The first year.
But we can, at the first of the year.
I think for accounting, it'd be cleaner.
Yeah.
So, um, so after that, what do you need from us today then?
Well, um, since we're not really operating under bids because we really receive none, we're entitled as as a county to purchase from the state contracts. So I guess I would just ask for authorization to make a purchase order to per order three Dodge Durango's from Wagner Auto pursuant to that contract price.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? But we don't know what what the twenty-three's are going to cost, correct?
The twenty-three's would be to to match our specs would be forty-one thousand seventy-eight dollars.
And you budgeted how much?
Forty-five times two, so.
You just don't know what the twenty-two.
The twenty-two, I think, would be somewhat less. I I do have the notes on on what we uh, what Vermillion Ford had for that twenty-two was thirty-seven, two twenty-five. Actually, it was thirty-nine, six twenty-five with a uh, trade-in of the take that back, no, thirty-seven, two twenty-five, because we didn't have a trade-in. And um, I think the Dodges were were less than that in twenty twenty-two. I just don't have the state contract. It's not on our website anymore. So there would be some savings if we can get that car. If we can't get that car, I'll come visit with you. I'll, I'll see if I can find other options. And then uh, come talk to you about that. And change this from three to two.
And that would be a hybrid then?
Back to gas.
Right, that's okay.
Motion and a second. Yeah, okay. This is just for the twenty-two or this is for all three?
This was, his recommendation was to order three twenty-twenty-three's because that twenty twenty-two is not ours. We're just second in line. Uh, so his recommendation was to order three as soon as we can.
Okay.
And then, and we're looking at next August. And so, that's why I I believe that if we don't get the twenty twenty-two he has in hand, I don't think I continue to run until August was what we have. So I'll probably, I'll probably shop around, see if I maybe find a surplus, how a patrol vehicle with some life in it that we can buy instead. Or maybe uh, go talk to our local dealers and do like uh, you did with the assessor's office, just buy a vehicle off the lot to put the detective into. And then we'd cancel one of those Durango's. But I want to get the order in in case we go with pursuit rated Durango's, get the order in right away before Dodge closes that.
It's a good idea to make the order because we can cancel.
He said you can always cancel.
We can cancel without penalties.
They can cancel on us.
Yeah.
He he says that.
That's different.
Yeah, he says that uh, that he hopes they don't cancel.
Yeah.
But, but Donnie knows that they're going to do that to him.
At this point, we just refund Donnie's.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do that one next.
Okay.
So we'll, um, we've got the motion to order the three twenty twenty-three's.
Right.
In a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. Now Donnie's bid bond.
Just make a, we we ought to uh, return his bid bond at this point.
I'm confident that he is sincere, that he's done everything he can to honor his bid, based on what he's shown me and and told me.
I'd make a motion to return his bid bond then.
I'll say. Zero motion in a second. Any further discussion? Can, can we get him to sell our cruisers for us?
Be a good thing. We can maybe talk to him about that. A consignment.
So, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes.
Donnie did tell me, uh, to let you know, he will be in this afternoon at his office if anybody has any questions of him or anything, but he just couldn't be here this morning. So I, I told him, you know, I could come and talk about him or he can be here himself and he intended to, it just didn't work. They're having trouble, they've got cars, uh, new cars ordered for months out, but he he says he's, he's frustrated in that there are this issue with patrol vehicles is where Ford isn't honoring these contracts is throughout the country. It's not just him. But yet they're continuing to build family vehicles. He said, I've, I've got a stock, you you know, on the lot for inventory for an explorer. It's not what we need. Why can't they just build these ones? They're, they're cookie cutter cars that they can just crank out. But he said that he is, he knows of another, another dealer or another agency that's sixty-eight Ford explorers on order. And they canceled all sixty-eight of them. So they, they've got, they've got cops with no cars to drive in some of these larger agencies. We're in that same sense of we will be in December. But uh, when you think of sixty-eight people that can't be driving, and so they're going to drive their older vehicles longer like we're going to do, but it's a problem.
But so Rod got his pickup canceled too. It'll be on some point to.
Yeah.
Was this his special pickup or just?
Well, he, he, he ordered one without a box. And so they stopped making those. He's like, fine, put a box on. Because they're still making those. Oh, you can't change the order. So, where he was at, he was fifth or sixth in line. I think they stopped. He was fifth and sixth down here from where they drew the line at. So.
Yeah, there are a lot of crazy issues, especially Ford, because they're redoing their dealer. Uh, they're dividing their dealerships into four different classes. And that's what I was wondering about Donnie, whether he uh, how many of the classes he's going to be able to retain his dealership for. I I hope, both all of them.
One other question to carry on, Wagner Auto requires a purchase order. Generally, when they require that, just do someone letterhead or do you have some sort of form for purchase orders?
I don't have a form for that. I think when we, I think when we bought the county van, I just did it on a letterhead.
That's what I'll do.
Set up here?
Yeah. Is that something I need to sign then?
Uh, I can sign it. If if it requires, I don't think it does. I've done it on other orders I've made that require purchase orders. This is the biggest one. Um, if that twenty twenty-two becomes ours yet this week, we actually have deputy going with Lane to training next week and he'll bring it back. Okay, anything else for me?
Budget supplement hearing and resolution.
So, um, this is just a now you'll see there's a lot of courthouse ones on this resolution. Um, Scott's budget was so up in the air this year because he was new and we hadn't really planned for it. And so it's just getting his budget in order before the end of the year. And then, let's see, I should pull up this resolution. I don't have it in front of me. My idea behind doing a supplement for these items is that towards the end of the year, it's easier to do a contingency transfer if somebody runs out of money than it is to actually advertise and do a supplement hearing. So, that's kind of what I was thinking there. Save some in contingency, I guess, for the end of the year and then.
So we're going to do professional services and fees for thirteen thousand. Uh, general fund government building improvements for forty-nine thousand. Rule Infrastructure Access Fund for twenty-one thousand and sixty-nine dollars.
And that one is simply because um, we got the money from the state, didn't budget. We knew it was going to be spent on the small structure inventory, but didn't budget because it was somewhat still up in the air. And a lot of counties, I think, are in the same boat with that because it was so new. Um, probably do that again next year because I don't know how much we're getting from the state next year for that. So, so you know, that's kind of coming to, this is just giving that spending authority since we had to pay um, for that small structure inventory.
Then we've got modernization and preservation fund, the software for forty-six hundred.
Same boat, um, the money's in the fund. Lisa um, had to order her software. Um, to switch over to Tri-Man. And so that's just, again, giving the spending authority in the budget because we didn't know how much exactly that was going to cost us until this year, so.
I move to approve it. A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. So that executive session, is that the one Drew was?
Yes.
Okay, so that one's, we don't, that one's gone. We don't need that one.
Oh.
Anybody have anything else?
Uh, I don't think I'll be here next week. And I don't know if I'll be able to get it online or not, going out to Denver. Because the meeting's what, the date first?
The first, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it fly out, so I don't know. Big thing is, I guess, the green bill, green, they're the very center ditch.
Yeah.
Want to make sure that that's done right.
Yeah.
And I'm going to give uh, you know, Tim came and Tim Grayware did, came and did part of it uh, last spring. This spring, I guess. And so I'm going to get a hold of it because he can come in and do the rest now.
We'll just put that on the tenth of November then.
Yeah, you don't mind doing that, do you? Because I'd like to be here for that.
Because we have to change the meeting next week, right?
Yes.
We have our meeting next week, but for the eighth, we have to move it to the tenth.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, that's fine. It's uh, they still think I'll be there because we'll be flying about that time.
Yeah.
So I don't think they'll let me do it.
Anybody else going next week? Was here?
Yeah.
Okay. Who to Jay? A motion in a second, all those favor, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.